I'll call the City Council Work Session of May 16th to order at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland?
Here.
James Burton?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Melina Meyer?
Here.
Ann Schaefer?
Here.
David Allison?
Here.
And James Wees?
Here.
That's everyone.
Okay, so the work session topic this evening is the Crater Lake Water and Power Project. And before I turn it over to Manager Lanning and staff, I'm going to pass the gavel to Councilman Schaefer, since Councilman Allison's online, to conduct the work session, because I want to recuse myself to the audience as a representative of Cordova Electric. So I'm not involved in the city part of it. And then if there's any questions to the audience or any questions from council, I can answer them on CEC's behalf. So, thank you, Councilman Schaefer.
City Manager Lanning?
Okay. As we've gone through this project several times, and the fact that we've talked about this during strategic planning, we've always portrayed that at some point, there's kind of a place where you have to make a decision whether you're going to participate or not participate, and what that level's going to be. Early on, as you all know, the city committed $50,000 in funding for the feasibility study. We had our staff involved in the review of that and comment on that. And since that time, during my tenure, we have had a couple of meetings regarding the project and future steps. Knowing that, I think we've tried to portray, or at least I've tried to portray, that at some point, we were going to be making a decision very similar to this. And this is a stepping off point for us, always trying to keep the project in the place where we have a stepping off point. The feasibility study is complete, and now, on the geotechnical side of it, it sort of came at us fast and furious because of an opportunity that is going to be here that will save us, save money on the geotechnical work. There are other funds from the Radiance Project that can be included, and it really keeps costs down for everyone. It was asked of me to bring this to you for funding, so that you can consider this. And I wanted to take this hour of the work session to just have you folks ask questions, and wherever your comfort level is on this. And in the resolution, as you can see, I gave you different levels that you could choose for funding, signifying your commitment at what level or not. And that decision is purely yours. You know, I think there are questions about what the value is to the city. Rich Rogers is here to be able to address any of those questions, because he was involved in the review of the feasibility study. So with that, I will leave it to you to ask questions and see who can provide answers to you.
So one of my questions that I had earlier was, yeah, how long would we see a return on investment on this project from the city's side? Yeah, when would we expect to see, and are we seeing return on investment already at some of the other water projects that we've done? Or, I don't know, what's our status in terms of water? Do we need more water right now? Is there a need for increased water?
Right now, no. You might want to go to the mics and give people on the phone.
Right now, no. As far as the need for more water, our worst demands are during pink season, the summer. Four and a half million gallons a day. We do that for a week or two. And our infrastructure now can provide that. All the reports I've gotten from our team is not once has somebody in Cordova had to pick up the phone in the summer and say, hey, where's my water? So all of demands, fish plants as well as residential, commercial, when people call for water, open their taps in the summer, we're making it, at four and a half million gallons a day from our three upland creeks. And, you know, we get a little nervous at that time, because we have to have either a good snow melt or a good rainfall distribution of rainstorm every couple days. If we have a two or three week dry spell during pink season, then we're going to be under the gun. And so if our infrastructure in our city grows, residences, businesses, or fish plants, we probably can provide, you know, 4.6, 4.7, maybe 5.0 million gallons a day. We don't know yet, we haven't hit that limit. Our infrastructure can deliver probably more than what we are now, as long as nature gives us the supply. So, you know, the need for that Crater Lake water is not here yet. Right now, that canyon, the Orca Creek watershed, gives us about one and a half million gallons a day. In our feasibility study, and the briefing that we did two years ago, shows that Crater Lake will give us another 1.8 million gallons a day. So more than doubling what we're getting from that canyon right now. We don't need it now, but in the future, we can get it if we need it.
So we're currently getting water from Crater Lake?
We are. It feeds Orca Canyon behind Orca Lodge. We've had a water plant there for several decades. We just upgraded it in the last couple of years with ultraviolet reactors, and a new building shell, and some new valves, and new skater. And it trickles out of the lake. The canyons up there collect other rainfall and bring it down to a catchment. We have a concrete engaging catchment up there at elevation 263 feet that forms a little pool that gives us a head of water that pushes down a pipe, 10-inch, 12-inch intake down to our water plant, right behind the Rainey's house. And we're very conscious of that, because we want to be good neighbors. They've been good neighbors, as we share real estate there, unisement. So that gives us, right now, we're getting almost a million, or half a million gallons a day from that plant, as we speak, one of our three plants. If we get a very fast rainfall, turbid water, our water gets cloudy, it'll shut off automatically due to the high suspended solids. But usually, that's a good clean water, and it's some of our best water, coming out of that lake, coming out of that canyon.
What about EAC Lake? How often do we have to use EAC Lake water?
We don't use it that often. For the past 11 years, we've averaged about 10 days a year using that. In 2017 and '16, we didn't use it at all. This year, we did use it. We had it on for 29 days back in March, due to Murchison Creek, which are another one of our upland sources over in that area, was frozen up, and we had no flow. And we don't like to use Mills Reservoir too much. It's our backdrop, and it's in a swamp up there. You know, it's good water, great water, but not our best. So we had it on for 29 days, but the average is 10 days a year. Now, that plant is 35 years old. Those plants are designed to be run almost 24/7. And we've only run it for 16 hours a day for about, average, 10 days a year. So it's underutilized. It's good to have. But when we use that plant, there's four pumps that take out of the lake. That plant only gives us about a million gallons a day. And it pushes water up to the same tank that Murchison Creek uses. So we can't have both those sources going at the same time, because they both go up to the same tank, same pipe. So if Murchison Creek is flowing good, I can't turn on EAC Lake, even if the other sources dry out. But it's a little balancing act there. We gave this a little briefing after the feasibility study report, which is now, I think, coming up on a year and a half, two years old. And I can do this again sometime, or I can send it out. Just, it's got some numbers in it that are kind of confusing, unfortunately. But as far as it shows, that we don't really need it now. But if the bottom line at the end is, you know, if we want growth in Cordova, then we're probably going to need more water, unless nature is real good to us and gives us exactly a good snowpack every year, or a rainstorm every four or five days, that will take care of our increased growth. Or if we want no growth, then we just use what we have. We will not need more water from Crater Lake.
Have other water sources been examined, alternatives?
The feasibility study did some of that. We've been on wells before in the city. There are a couple small ponds up on some high ground around here that have been looked at. But nothing could give the volume that Crater Lake offers with the bowl. It's in a bowl up there, so it collects rain, collects snow. So from a water point of view, no. And, you know, desalinization is very expensive. I don't really want to, probably don't want to look at that.
Would there be a lot of cost into taking the lake water and using a different, because you talked about how if you use the lake water, you can't use the other reservoir that you have? Is there a way to separate that a little bit, so you could get that half a million gallons and process water from the other?
That's an interesting, that's an interesting thought. We, over on that, out on Copper River Highway, as you know where the EAC plant is, that's where Murchison Creek comes down. So we would have to set up a separate pipe and a separate tank, and run that pipe all the way into town, build a new tank and a new pipe, to make use of both those resources at the same time. Because both those, as I say, both those sources go to the EAC plant, and there's only one line going up to one tank. And right now, if I had the lake on, then I can't push up the water coming from Murchison. If Murchison's flowing, then I can't fit all the water in there at one time. So I'd have to build another, like, 12-inch pipe and a tank, a pipe to the tank, and then run a line into town. We have two lines now in the highway, which we dug up last week. You saw part of that, you know, it's eight feet down. We'd be putting a pipe like that in the ground, all the way back in. And, you know, I haven't talked to people about that, haven't studied it. You're the first person that's asked that question about, how can we get both of them to work? So that's a real unstudied answer, but that's my first rough guess.
How would you rate Lake Water? The way you talk about the ones that work out are the best, probably, right?
It's our clearest water out there. And Lake Water, we run through filters, and we have charcoal and chemicals to affect, to clean up any visual or odor, to meet drinking water standards. So, you know, and you hear stories around town, people don't like the Lake Water. Well, when it comes to our treatment system, it's okay. And like I said, we drank it this year for 29 days, and it was, basically, served a third to a half of our city consumption. A third to a half of our water during that time was from EAC Lake. And I didn't get a phone call, we didn't get phone calls saying, you know, I smell the water, I know you guys are on it, which usually happens. Couple years ago, we went out to the public, we put out an announcement, hey, you know, we're going to go to Lake Water for the next couple of days. And, you know, we got phone calls, and we got gripes. But we didn't say anything this time, and, eh, nobody said anything. I don't recall.
Okay.
So we have the potential of a road going in up to Humpback Creek here now. Has anybody looked at water from Humpback Creek?
Not recently. One source option from a couple studies of earlier, a decade ago, was, you know, running a line out to Middle Fork? What's it?
Middle Iron?
Middle Iron, across the lake over, because they say that's good water. Humpback Creek water supply, I don't know, Clay might have known, because of the work they did there with Hydro Electric, I'm sure someone probably at that time said, hey, pipe it in from there. But not recently. I don't even know if it was mentioned in the feasibility study from two years ago.
I don't know if you or Clay would be better one to ask this question to, but do we know what we're looking at for dollars amount to get this water for future? How much the city would be putting in?
Roughly, it's roughly at the 50% number, 50/50 split. I think it's just under that. It's in the feasibility, feasibility study report talks about a cost split.
Yeah, that was addressed. I think some of this is developed under 50/50 cost share. Since I've been here, I think what we've talked about is the cost of the project and the value to the two different, or to the entities involved, speaking of the city and CEC. For example, if 60% of the benefit was in the electrical production, we would at some point develop an agreement between the entities that would state our benefit, and that would, I think, accrue to or associate with our investment. I don't know that it-
And that's around, the project is about an $18 or $19 million cost, so split that in half, that's what we're looking at, roughly in half, $9 million, $9 or $10 million capital costs for construction.
Ms. Randy and Orca Lodge have had a lot to say about just pending dangers associated with a dam above their property. What does a geotechnical study do to shed more light on that?
A geotech study is going to drill, I believe, about 10 holes in the ground, four, I think four or five up at the dam, one up at the Crater Lake fault, the visual fault that's up there, running across the lake, three down below, down at the treatment site, down at her level, roughly the level of Orca Lodge. And one or two along the Penn Stock Route down the hill, and then several test pits, shallower test pits. So geotech study goes down, and they're down to about 50-foot depth, looking at rock cores, if they're, whether we're in rock, it looks like most of them will be in rock up there. And the geotech guys look at these, they pull these cores out, and they look for, you know, weak zones, junctions, some geologic fracture or potential fracture that would either slip, a crack, or a re-permeable that would allow water. So that's what that does. And it's kind of, it's pretty valuable. It's required, obviously, for dams, yeah. That geotech evaluation is being requested by CEC this summer, the past couple months. And it's, most, part of it's on, most of it's on city property. So CEC has come to the city with a request for land use permit, to go up there this summer with these drilling crews and do this work at selected sites, at a base camp down below, and then up on top in the mole where the dam, the footprint of the dam will go. And we have reviewed their requests two times, and looking at it from the landowner's perspective, they're on city property, that's a controlled watershed, one of our unfiltered sources, because the drilling they're going to do is in or very near to the little canyon up there that captures our drinking water for Orca. That million and a half gallons a day that we definitely need from that plant come July 15th through August 15th, roughly. So you can imagine drillers up there, a couple drill rigs, one, maybe two, three drill rigs, crawling up on a skid trail, possibly, maybe a base camp, partial base camp up there. So we've been concerned, and we've given requirements back, saying, we're not going to agree to this work until you guarantee us, assure us in your project documents, that your contractors and your inspectors and your geologists are going to keep a clean site, no runoff, you know, have measures in place to control erosion, stormwater runoff, oil spills, human waste, you know, trash waste, whatever, not in the watershed. Because if we, as a community, allowed some accident up there to force us to shut down Orca, I lose a million and a half gallons in July, then I have no other source but to count on Mills Reservoir, also giving us one and a half million gallons, and then Murchison, either Murchison or EAC Lake, giving us one and a half million gallons. And we'll lose a third of our city water supply if that happens. So Clay and Craig have, you know, resubmitted again, and we've given comments back with their geologic firm and their contractors that they're going to hire to do this, saying, hey, you got to have a, you got to have a pretty clean operation, because we can't let this watershed be shut down.
Hey, Rich?
Yes?
I've got a few questions. One of them would be, I guess, you know, if we do partner with CEC, who would control the storage and the flow, you know? Who controls when the water gets filled? I know CEC wants to generate energy, they're going to want to spill water, but, you know, we want to keep our storage, or if we need water and they don't want the upstream energy, I'm just curious how that would work?
Yeah, that's a good question. I haven't thought through it. I don't think the feasibility study did. I'd like to defer to Clay, but he pulled himself out of his conversation, so I don't know if he can answer that. But, you know, I hope our relationship would be cooperative enough where we would say, hey, you know, the people of Cordova need drinking water today or this week, and they don't need it for hydro, but we got to open the, we got to use Crater Lake water. Hopefully, CEC would say, okay, you know, we got to reach, and vice versa. If the people of Cordova need electricity, cheaper electricity from that Penn Stock, and I don't need the water for drinking water, hopefully, we'd have no objection to them opening the valves to make some electricity.
Do we have any-
Yeah, I'm just curious to see able to make that call. Another question. So currently, that water comes down, it's gravity fed into a little collection, and then that builds your head pressure, so you can get it down and get it down. There's no pumping involved, right?
That's correct.
So then, if you use this water to run turbines to generate electricity, it's going to take quantum momentum out of the water, and you're going to have to pump it back up into the city's, into the city's system, is how I was understanding it. And I was curious, who would pay for pumping that water back up? You know, that takes electricity to pump it, so it seems counterproductive to generate electricity just to pump it back up, but...
You're right in that running that water through the turbines takes energy out of it. It is true, it's got to be pumped. I think it was discussed at length in the feasibility study, as far as how much we anticipate that. It's a rather minor amount of electricity each day to do that. And off the top of my head, I don't recall a discussion about who's going to pay for that. I got to defer to Clay, if he may remember, I don't know.
Are there any more comments on the phone? Go ahead.
Along the same lines as what Ken just asked, in the period of time, let's say that this goes forward, and there's a dam constructed, and what happens during the time we're waiting for that thing to fill up? Do we totally lose the water supply that we're relying on now?
Let's see, for the dam to fill up, however long that's going to be, a year, or two, or three, roughly, well, we still, no, we still, we're still going to have a pipe coming out of that, coming out of the lake. We have an existing water treatment plant that, if this project goes, will be, the guts of it will be transferred over to the new treatment building. I think in the construction process, there'll be a way where we can, we continue, we pretty much will have to allow for our current Orca plant to keep, to stay functional, with a minimal switch over time for key components, you know, so that we don't lose. We could, we have backup with Mills Reservoir to use Mills for a week or so in the summer. We could shut down Orca for a couple days or a week, and use, get water from elsewhere, but we'd have to keep an eye on the weather conditions. But Mills Reservoir gives us about a five-day, five-to-six-day, or more backup source if we lost Orca, if we had to shut Orca down for construction, during construction.
Right. My question was more along the lines of making sure that we weren't going to have to stop utilizing it in order for this to take place?
Yeah, I, rainstorms would, you know, keep flooding to the existing Orca plant. We could set up pumps during the dam construction. We could set up pumps to take water out of Orca if we can't use a temporary pipe through the dam to keep our current plant going. I think your question could be addressed without too much difficulty when we, you know, when you get to the point of telling the contractor that they got to, they have to maintain a certain amount of flow during the work to our current plant. I think it's doable.
Right, well, okay. The issue is important, because construction season and fishing season happen at the same time, so there's a reason I asked that. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have interruption, if this is something that even, you know, takes place in the next couple of years or whenever. Thanks.
Welcome.
I have to have one other question. I guess I'm just curious, you know, you said you were getting a million to a million and a half per season. I believe I got that right?
We're getting a million and a half from each of our three mountain sources, yes, at peak demand, right?
Okay, then, so that 18-inch pipe that's underneath the Orca Canary Road, it'd be able to handle the increased capacity you're expecting?
Yeah, that's a, the existing pipe is 16-inch ductal iron. It serves as a contact tank. It has for several decades. Because it's like a big linear storage tank, the choke points that we're more concerned about in our infrastructure throughout the city are 12-inch valves, 10-inch valves, and 8-inch valves, as the network gradually brings water from our tanks down to the fish plants, mostly from Maurepak Tank. And, you know, you can, we can run a model, you can run, try to run models of your existing infrastructure and plug it into these computer programs, or do it by hand, the old-fashioned way, and they're really estimates as to whether you're going to have any choke points or not. I think- Uh, I think, um, I don't think we're gonna have any, we're, we're gonna have to find that out by, um, increased water demand. And, and someday when we're flowing more than we are now, um, somebody's gonna say, hey, I'm not getting enough water. And we're gonna realize there's a choke point. It's, uh, we can spend, for a network analysis, we have it on our, our unfinished, our unfunded request right now for forty thousand dollars. I can, I can have an engineering firm run some models of our existing infrastructure and try to find where we may have a choke point that we haven't found yet, but, but numerically it might appear. And, you know, which ten inch valve or, cause we have a lot of, you know, ninety degree angles, new pipe joining old pipe. Every time there's a change of direction, we have a energy loss. Uh, but it won't be dealing with that, that sixteen inch pipe, uh, going under Orca Road. The feasibility study did say, did recommend that they, we increase the size of a pipe running, uh, from the base of Morpack Hill up to the tank. There's a pipe junction at the base of that hill. I believe that's several, that'll be several hundred feet of, uh, increased pipe diameter. But other than that, um, and that was included in, in the cost of this project. Other than that, there's, you know, no, no other known choke point yet.
Thanks.
So I've got a couple small questions. So we've got a project we're looking at for benefits for all the citizens in the community. And the risk would be shouldered by basically a family or a family business. So what kind of risk assessment analysis have we done in this? And what type of dam structure are we looking at? Are we looking at an earthen dam with, you know, a riprap face on it? Or what kind of dam construction are we looking at? Or we even got to that in this?
It's not, not designed yet. Uh, the, the details of the dam, no. Risk analysis, I don't think we've, we've done. I mean, the feasibility study did not do that as far as, you know, safety analysis of people under the dam.
And we've been looking at doing those kind of analysis, how far down the road into the project? Would it, would that be something that we'd be doing in the geotech stuff?
No, I think, uh, I think that would be probably required by, uh, maybe required by the state dam office saying, you know, you, you gotta do some, some safety.
I understand, but what I'm trying to figure out is how far into the project? How much money are we gonna spend before we get to the point where we could do an assessment like that to know whether, you know, what risks we were shouldering and who we're having shouldered?
I don't know, I can't answer that question right now. I see, see Clay for help, but he's...
Well, can he, can you?
Yeah, I just, I actually was leaving the, the council table so that I could speak from CEC.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But, um, I'm kinda capturing the questions here that I kinda feel there should have been more around.
Okay. Okay, among that, I do little simple easy questions. Thanks for answering.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Rich?
Um, saying that we're meeting our needs right now for water demand, what value is this to the city?
That we're meeting our water demands?
If we're meeting our water demands now, what value is this to the city?
Future growth. And, and again, uh, I don't know when that's gonna kick in, cause right now we're, 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 we're meeting what the city needs in our crunch times. And, uh, if, if the city's demand were to increase from four point five up to five point oh, I'm, I'm, we, we have a real good chance of making that now. I, it's hard to put a number on what our total capacity is. We provide four point five million gallons a day now. I don't know what, what our system can, can push out. Because it's based on everybody opening their taps at the same time and letting the whole thing drain. So when will we need more than what we have? I don't know, I think, you know, go from four point five to five, five point five. I, I, I don't, I can't put my finger on a number that says, this is when I'm gonna get a phone call from, from Ocean Beauty saying, we're not getting the water we need. You know, I don't, and that's when we need Crater Lake. That's what Crater Lake will, will, would kick in.
Do you have, do you have figures showing like our water usage through the years and how it's raised? Like now it's at four point five a day, is what you're saying, but like how long ago is it at four point oh? Or when it'd be projected to be at five point oh, for example?
Yeah, we do, our growth in the last fifteen years is about four percent a year, four percent consumption increase per year. And we, we do have a whole bunch of all sorts of data on that. And if that's, that would be helpful, we, I can, you know, we can fix some of that.
Did someone have a comment on the phone?
Yeah, uh, I was just curious if they've done any, yeah, cost analysis on if our water rates and profit taxes will have to increase in order to pay for this, this nine million dollars to these portions?
No, we haven't done that yet. Uh, as far as how, um, how we pay for future infrastructure, let's see, uh, enterprise fund, water is an enterprise fund. Yeah, I, one, one option of funding it would be increased rates. There are other, there are other, other funding options which we, you know, we look at every time we look at a new project. We borrow money, we get a grant, we get a, do a bond, uh, we dig into savings or we, we bump up rates. Haven't made that decision yet.
If you work in the budget on pages one seventy-eight and one seventy-nine, included in your budget were rate analyses on the various enterprise funds. And it shows, um, what the current rates plus an additional ten percent, twenty percent and thirty percent would look like. Not, not anticipating that those costs would cover, you know, the bond involved, but we do have that rate analysis to some degree in the back of the budget. And we could, we could certainly expand upon that to, uh, based upon a, uh, participation rate, give you that number, what it would cost to cover, but, um, so.
What is the rate for a household for water for a month?
Yeah, it's forty-nine, somewhere between forty-three and forty-nine dollars.
A month?
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, right now, our rate structure every year brings in, for the water department, about a million dollars, uh, fees, water fees. So if our fees go up ten percent, we're gonna bring in another hundred thousand. Okay, well, this project's gonna cost us eight million. So, you know.
Ten percent in debt service. Eight million dollar project is eight hundred thousand dollar payment, approximately.
So we have a couple rates in order to pay for it through a rate hike?
Well, I think how to pay for it is yet to be determined. You know, I, I would say that that's probably the best bet is through a rate hike, uh, obviously, but, um... I, I don't think I've done the math on that yet, what that would exactly look like. It depends on our participation level.
Kinda sounds like it looks, kinda sounds like three dollars and fifty cents a day for water. That's what it looks like, right? That's, I mean, for a common household.
I don't know, ten percent?
No, no, if you double it.
Excuse me?
If you double it. It's forty-nine dollars a month.
Yeah, yeah, it's a buck and a half a day right now. Yeah, so the impact of doubling people's water rates, that's, that'll be certain to get some attention.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Do we know how much our residential household demand is for water and what our commercial plants are? So would this be planning for the future for another plant coming into Cordova? That would need that extra water or residential?
Yeah, that's thirty to, um, thirty to forty percent. Split out between residential and, and, uh, fish plant and other.
And our storage tanks are, how much are they to build? Do we need bigger water storage tanks? Would that help with the water demand or?
We have six tanks now that currently store for us four million gallons of water. So, you know, if we were really in trouble in the summer, they'd, they'd go dry in a day or two. They, uh...
Are they in good shape?
They're, they're in good shape. We just, you know, last year, part of LT two, we, we renovated four of them. Two interior and exterior and two exterior for coatings, protective coatings. And I, um, you know, they're a million, a million or more, a couple million dollars a pop for a, uh, equivalent tank of what we have. And, uh, I, I haven't done the math on, you know, whether one, one or two more would help us or not. They never hurt, but they're not, they're not gonna help us. I don't think they're gonna, you know, if we're not getting water from, we're really subject to the, the bounty of timing of nature. Our backup is, is Yak Lake. And if that were our only source, we'd be getting one million gallons of a day from Yak Lake, maybe one, one and a half. But yet our demand is four and a half in the bad time of summer. So that's a bad place to be in, you know, but that would happen. If we, if we had a drought summer and we had no snowpack melt, our creeks wouldn't be giving us water. We'd be stuck with Yak Lake. That's when the phone calls would start coming from Ocean Beauty and Trident North and everybody down low saying, where's our water? They said, we can't give it to you. All I got is Yak Lake. And that's only a million and a half a day. That's a third of what the city needs.
So if another plant came to Cordova, a large processing plant, how much water, more water would we need?
Well, um, I think our plants now on the, on that worst day, worst days of the year, they're using one and a half to two million gallons a day. That's six of our plants, granted they're different sizes.
Together?
Yeah, all together. So another plant might, might use, uh, half of the, uh, point three NGD or half a million gallons a day all by itself in that ballpark.
There are about fourteen more minutes left. Um, are there any more questions for Rich or?
Can I just clarify, water rates, twenty-nine fifty-eight a day for a single family?
Thank you. So like a buck a day?
Buck a day?
Yeah.
Yeah. Double that to two.
Those, all those current monthly rates on page one seventy-eight in the, in the, uh, the back of the budget. And the highest rate is for, like bar with restaurant for every twenty-five seats, you know, those kind of uses, so. For a single family, twenty-nine fifty-eight. At thirty-eight, which is nine dollars, uh, produces nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand in revenue, which brought a two hundred, two hundred thousand dollar increase. So it would probably, it, it would at least, if you were calculating our contribution on a payment, seven or eight hundred thousand, it would double the rates for a single family.
Thank you. Just, you know, yeah.
Did you want me to ask you a couple of those or?
Yeah, it sounds good to me.
Yeah, I have some questions about...
So I'll just try to run through these, uh, real quick. Who controls the flow? Uh, that's a good question and that's probably one of the more complex parts is, um, when you need water, you need, uh, electricity. Right now, it's pretty straightforward because you need both at the same time. The two systems compete with each other right now because they, they operate, they have excess water or not enough for the same reasons. If it gets clear and cold out, our reservoirs start getting drawn down with nothing feeding into them. Our run of the river hydro has quit producing. So just when, um, the city is having to be forced to use water from Yak Lake, we're at our highest diesel and our electric rates are double or triple. Last couple of months, we've been having a lot of complaints because fuel prices are up from last year and we had, you know, a normal cold spring in March and April. And you see that on your electric bill, it can double. So right at the time when CEC is running short on energy, we have the city throwing a couple more, you know, we have them throwing more load on us and it's just adding to the diesel we're already burning. So two things, it's forcing us to use more diesel and it's, their electricity is a much higher cost. So they kinda fight each other right now. A big storage tank, um, complements because right when the city needs water, because water system's drying up, we need the energy. So we can trickle it out a little bit at a time and still save diesel. Doesn't matter whether we produce, you know, if we produce the maximum the project can produce or disproduce a couple hundred kilowatts. We still have, Crater Lake won't make up all the diesel that we have left. It'll only make up about a third or a fourth of the diesel that we're still burning. But we can use it very strategically for energy. So we can let it out a little bit at a time or a lot at a time when the city needs water and it's still gonna all offset diesel generation. There's probably gonna be a little bit of times, I estimated five percent of the time maybe where one or the other would need water or energy. So, but on the front end, there's a really high correlation, so that's good. And that's part of the other message is that they both get a little more efficient. As far as the pumping goes, you're dropping at sixteen hundred feet and then you're repressurizing a little bit. So just thinking of it as you getting eight or nine units of energy out of the water and then using one of those units of energy to repressurize it, set it down the line. And we initially looked at that as just a plant operating cost. In other words, CEC wouldn't build the city for that. It would just like, look like an energy loss to us. And that, that's gonna happen, you know, we could move the elevation of the project lower and get more energy out of it, but then we just have to pump it harder, so. Uh, but if you're releasing, you know, five gallons a minute through the project and you're only using two gallons a minute to go to the city, um, then you're only using a part of the energy. So at the end of the day, it's fairly small and it's not something we'd build for. At least, uh, we don't, we haven't made those arrangements, but that was, uh, the thought process so far. The operations and maintenance is a really important part. One of the huge advantages on the electrical side, you know, I would guess on the city is that, uh, you know, as you heard, uh, metal tanks have to be maintained. And two million dollars for one million gallon tank. Uh, Crater Lake is three to four hundred million gallons of storage. So that's enough energy to equal several hundred, uh, two million dollar lithium ion batteries, for instance. There are over a billion dollars worth of batteries. So you're close to a billion dollars worth of steel tankage to store as much water as Crater Lake can. So there's a certain security element in having that much energy and, and a very, very clean water source, storing that resource for when you need it. And that's the other thing, it's, it isn't just, um, whether we get more demand in the summer. It actually creates an opportunity to have more water and more energy, lower cost energy available in the winter. So that's one of the advantages, but, um, even with the very highest, uh, the very biggest dam storage in the twenty, twenty-eight to thirty foot, uh, level, even if you built it at that, the whole lake would fill up and, and drain twice. In other words, you almost have twice that much water going through the system a year is what you would be storing. So it isn't like you'd have to wait years for it to fill up, either in your, in your fall... So it isn't like you'd have to wait years for it to fill up either in your, in your fall rains or your spring runoff. That, that alone is gonna fill it up and you actually kind of need to use that water to get the value of it before it fills back up again. So choke points, just to be clear, that, that big water line out there would pass, would be able to pass that full, you know, two-point-eight-nine, um, million gallons a day. So there's no choke points in that big line and that's, that's the expensive part. That's like three miles right from Oregon to town. That's one of the advantages too. CEC has a lot of transmission line capacity that goes right through there into town. So you don't have to build the transmission, water or power lines, which is usually a real expensive part of projects. So with risk assessment, uh, hydros are, it's something you don't really talk about because it's, not only is it just assumed that it's gonna be built to a standard, but that's the primary regulatory concern. There's three hazard classes, you know, low hazard, medium hazard, high hazard. And high hazard is just determined by are there people downstream? Are there people and structures downstream that could be damaged? So if you, if you like Google, uh, Blue Lake and Sitka, for instance, the entire Silver Bay, Canary, all the industry, everything is right downstream of their dam. But it's several hundred feet high where they have hundreds of pounds of pressure. We're talking about a dam that's gonna be thirty-five feet high or thirty feet high or ten feet high and have, you know, ten to twenty pounds of pressure. So, um, that being said, because of concerns of the landowner and because of regulatory requirements, the risk assessment is something that has to be mitigated through the design process. But given the landowner's concern and frankly, CEC's unfamiliarity and the city's probably of managing a storage project, that's an element we've actually been discussing and we need to, um, have those discussions with Rainies, especially if we go forward with this work in the summer. And that answers the other question about, uh, that was a good point about the geotech. That's one of the reasons you do the geotechnical to see what is the strength of the rock? Uh, what might be the weaknesses and what, what is the risk that you would have? Even, you know, introduce the potential for landslides or something after you destabilize a slope, so. I would anticipate doing some risk assessment and there, there are extra safety layers that you can add, uh, I hope at fairly low cost to actually exceed regulatory requirements that might help, um, you know, allay community concerns. And believe me, it, it isn't just, um, it isn't just the adjacent landowners. It's any citizens that happen to be in the area. We don't wanna wash out roads or endanger human life. So as, as far as the payment, uh, just like this, um, geotechnical assessment, the attractive thing about this project is that you have two value streams. So you can share in the operations and maintenance through the life of the project, which is very long life. And, uh, you can share in the cost. I think this project has fairly good chance of getting, I think it may even require funding. It's a big financial lift for the community to undertake a project like this. We've been successful in getting, um, federal and state support for these types of projects in the past. I would think we'd almost have to get a pretty high level of, um, assistance with this project to make it pencil out for us. And, uh, the long-term pencils out easily. It's just, you know, coming up with the money and putting that burden on the community now to build it, so. And I just add that we don't have everybody connected to the water system in the city. I'm one of the people that doesn't have water service. My, my water bill is almost two hundred dollars a month 'cause I have a well that I have to operate and maintain. I'm on my second well pump in twenty years. I'm on my third wa- uh, water softener system in twenty years. I have to add salt, I have to change filters, I have to pay for the electricity to pump it and filter it. It's not as good a quality frankly as the city's water. I would love to be connected to the city water system. And I don't think a lot of people have actually done the math on how much it costs to run your own water system. It's very expensive. And believe me, there's other things I'd rather do with my time as well, so. So that's, I think I got most of it.
How about controlling the flow of water? How we determine when water's let out and who controls that?
If we were to have a demand call, say, "Gosh, we need water today," how would we? Because we had talked about that during one of our meetings, I think.
We have.
Discussed.
So I think for the most part, we can do it. I'm, I'm hoping we can do it automatically. The water system has a control system that it can call for water. That same call can be dispatched to the Cordova Electrics Control System and say, "Hey, run Crater Lake now." That just becomes one of the, the logic decision makers in our, and so. And fortunately, water isn't something that you have to do at light speed like electricity. So if we can get like a half hour notice or something, I mean, let me put it this way, we respond in seconds to those requests with our power system. I think it'd be pretty easy to automate that. And, and because of the way this hydro is structured, it's fairly small energy supply. It's really structured to be a water supply that we just harvest the energy from as the city needs water. That's really the way to think of it. It was actually kind of a city looking for various water sources. Oh, that was the other one. We did look at Humpback Creek. It's a very clean source most of the time. Uh, we've tested it three times and basically CEC said you can drink it right out of your pipeline 'cause we have a bug house out there. It gets really turbid, just like Crater Lake does when there's high flows. But, um, that road, the only thing is you're looking at, you know, a couple, three miles of pipeline because the CEC catchment is at the bottom of a canyon. You'd have to somehow get it up and over. But, um, it's absolutely, has the potential and there's, set up about eight billion gallons goes through the Humpback Creek watershed and only about a half a billion goes through the Crater Lake watershed. So that, there is potential, but it would be fairly costly and you don't get the energy benefit from it, so. Is there any other questions or? Okay, thanks.
Well, I actually have one question about the height of the dam. Have you? Is a really large dam necessary rather than maybe like a six-foot dam?
So what happens is, the bigger the dam is, the more water you can store at once. And that's not just to get, just for a season, but it's also to carry through to another year if you have to. So it's kind of like having a, I don't know if it's even a good analogy. It's just like the gas tank in a car. You know, you, you can increase, the project with a very low dam might be in the thirteen, fourteen million dollar range. The project with a high dam, you know, in the eighteen to nineteen million dollar range. Um, I don't think the gap's even that much, but, um, the storage is what's critical. On the energy side especially, uh, we don't have any energy storage anywhere on our system. So we spill more excess hydro through our hydro plants now than Crater Lake would produce because we just don't have it. So once you can store a lot of energy, now you can start having things like solar and wind where you use those resources when they're available and then you use something like Crater Lake when it's not.
So it doesn't pencil out like how much energy you're getting?
It doesn't pencil out as well because if you only have a six-foot high dam, you might, you, you would only be able to store, say, um, a hundred million gallons of active storage. That means you're gonna fill it and spill it constantly unless you use it when it's available. So you're kind of forced to use it. And you may be forced to use it when we already have water available or power available. So then it ends up going to waste. So you end up creating a situation where you're building basically a storage project, but you're putting yourself in a position where you can only store a fourth or a fifth of the resource. So the bigger the dam, the better the storage. From a safety perspective, you're a six-foot height, it's about one pound of pressure for every two feet of elevation. So you're changing the pressure from a six-foot dam to three pounds per square inch to the pressure on a thirty-foot dam of fifteen pounds per square inch. And, you know, as, as far as mechanical pressures go, it's, it's an insignificant difference. It's not like the hundreds of pounds of pressure that many of the hydro projects around the state have.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know you're wrapping this up and it's a work session, but I just wanted to make one quick statement to a couple of those questions if possible.
Sounds good to me. Do you wanna use the microphone?
Sure. So the risk assessment that you talked about, um, it doesn't matter what risk assessment is done. Our lodge is built on an alluvial plane. If the dam fails, the water's gonna go one direction to one place. We've seen the damage that a six-foot ice dam does in that same Crater Lake exit. It almost wiped out our house and it took out the lodge. That's a six-foot dam. Now, the dam we're talking about I thought was twenty-five feet, but Clayton, I, well, that bumped up to thirty. So I'm kind of confused because I hear different levels of how tall the dam's actually gonna be. The geotech survey sounds pretty invasive. Our season at that lodge runs from May to October. We have twenty-year history of word-of-mouth advertising. If you're gonna put a skidder road and a base camp and drill rigs up on the side of that mountain, when is that gonna happen where it's not gonna affect my business? My business is to take people from other places and give them a pristine Alaska adventure. Where's the base camp gonna be? When is a skidder road being put up behind my house? This isn't a very simple question and the conversation has a lot of different outlets. I appreciate some of the council members that have come out to the property and actually looked at where the water's gonna go if it breaks. But there are no assurances that you can give me that a dam on a fault line is, does not have the potential to fail in a natural disaster. At any given time, I have hundreds of people in that lodge. I'm sorry, but it's a no-brainer. There's life and property at risk for this project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And do we have to adjourn? Do we just say we adjourn?
Oh.
It's seven oh three.
Yeah, you can leave that.
So that will adjourn the work session.
May sixteen, two thousand and eighteen to order at seven oh six. Uh, let me join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by its mission under God, made of this world.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Copeland.
Here.
James Burton.
Here.
Ken Jones.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Alina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
James Wiese.
Here.
And Olivia Carroll.
Here.
That's a quorum. That's everybody.
Approval of the regular agenda? All those in favor?
Did somebody move it?
Oh. Thank you. All those in favor?
Did James second it?
I, I.
I'll second.
Okay.
Opposed?
Sorry, I meant to say also that there's no executive session needed. The attorney doesn't have any update for us.
Okay. Uh, disclosures of conflicts of interest. Does counsel have any conflicts to declare? Okay, uh, even though I'm not a voting member, I'm gonna declare a conflict on the Crater Lake discussion. You know, recuse myself from that as well. And also I would like to recuse myself during, um, communications, buying petitions from visitors so I can speak on CEC's behalf to that agenda item. Uh, communications from visitors? We don't have any guest speakers for tonight? Oh, uh, yeah, so audience comments regarding an agenda item?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could just go ahead to the mic, Robin, uh, your name and residence for the record.
Uh, Rob Brown, Southland Sheen, Cordova, Alaska. And, uh, yeah, just like take a minute to, um, thank the council, the planning commission, city staff and the public for the support of my project in the Northville so far. And, um, and, uh, I, I think it's a good project. I've crunched a lot of numbers and, uh, I think my return on investment is gonna be between three and ten years. And, um, it's gonna, you know, I'm gonna contribute to city coffers. And I think the, again, one of the most important things I think is, I wanna talk about economic development in town and, um, I think one of the biggest opportunities for development economically in this town, just what I've seen since its inception is the, is the travel lift and the shipyard. And I think having my services is gonna make that much more desirable for people to bring their vessels here. I think I've said this before, but just to reiterate, you know, it's because, um, I mean, right now we're just serving mostly vessels that work and are, are, are homeported in Cordova and, you know, if, um, make more traffic, get some vessels from out of town, really get that thing hopping 'cause there's a lot of work going through there and a lot of revenue being generated. And I think that's just a good focus point of this and, and, um, I think that's about it. Yeah, and thank you, so.
Okay, thank you. There are audience comments regarding agenda items?
Tom, you have three or four for your endless drive. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank counsel, the, uh, work assessment that you had. You asked all the right questions. I got kind of informed. I came in with a lot of questions. I still got some. I really appreciate it. You guys seem educated on what to ask. I appreciate that. There's still some things I'm thinking about. I hope you guys will take the time, maybe in a couple more days, another meeting, think about what was discussed here tonight before you make the decision. I'd also like to recommend that perhaps you get maybe an outside source consultant or something, somebody not associated with CEC or the building project and kind of go over the electrical part, the dam part, the hydro part with you on this. See if that makes sense. Uh, because your decision here, you made this decision tonight, you're also, in a sense, giving Cordova Electrics a green light, like we're partners, we're moving forward. You're starting us down that road to commit to a twenty million dollar plus project. And, and keep in mind, these prices are a year old, the estimates, prices have gone up. They've really gone up lately. Steel's up twenty, thirty percent. I was just in a box store the other day, plywood that I used to buy for eleven dollars a sheet is now twenty-four dollars a sheet. So that's just in a short time. So those numbers that you've got, you can expect to be further for the project, but... But I appreciate you asking all the right questions, put a lot of thought into this because electric rates will go up, water rates will go up, mill rate will go up. Is it all worth it in the end? It might be, but I hope you'll really get yourself educated on it before you make your final decision. Thank you.
I'd like to speak on that point, too.
Yes, this is Rob Brown. And yeah, I'd like to just voice my support for, to pursue these kind of projects. It's just, I mean, why look at, it's a big battery up there that's filled by Mother Nature, and why not tap the thing, you know? But as far as the cost and the safety, I'm not really familiar with that, but I'm sure that's going to be scrutinized greatly. But yeah, I'm just, I'm for it. I mean, I guess I'm aware that Kodiak is 100% renewable energy. And that'd be kind of a good goal for Cordova in the long term, you know, I think.
If, I might recuse myself now to make some comments on Crater Lake, then if anyone else wants to speak, but I'm not sitting here influencing that process. So I'll pass the gavel to Ann for a minute.
Clay Copeland, 100 Jensen Drive, Cordova. And speaking on behalf of Cordova Electric. So the Crater Lake project, the timing of this request is not something that CEC had anticipated. In fact, we don't have this in our own operating budget. We decided that other work we were doing and, you know, a physical battery that we're looking at framing up more hydro from Power Creek. But the opportunity knocked. We had an opportunity to get $100,000 of support from the Department of Energy. And we have a drilling crew coming in this summer that's going to be drilling out, in fact, physically right in that area. And their equipment is suitable, and we don't have to share in their mope and demope cost, which is a big part of that. So the CEC Board of Directors voted to move forward with this. It's not a commitment to the project. It's the, it's the kind of the final answer and the necessary design information that helps you find what are the risks with the geotechnical, which is the biggest remaining risk, is the quality of the rock. And what are you going to have to do to support that rock? In other words, that's going to have a lot of influence on what your project cost is going to be, because you're going to know how much steel, how much concrete, how deep are you going to have to put your anchors and foundations. So that helps you get a much more accurate overall project estimate. So that's why now, and it's why we haven't done, frankly, more outreach with the Rainies and the stakeholders and the permitting. We're kind of scrambling now with the city to get that done, to try to keep the cost down and share the costs. The CEC Board, they really want to signal at least from the city and some contribution so that they're not bearing the full risk and cost of this. If we don't move forward, then it's, you know, that's an opportunity we looked at and decided to go elsewhere. So one city, one Cordova Electric board member did vote against moving forward with it just because they had not seen a commitment from the city. So they're hoping for one and hoping for a cost share so we can answer these questions and move forward. And as far as the risk, I think I'll just leave that alone. It's, I'm not a risk expert. I know we have 68,000 dams in service in the U.S. They're very reliable. Just like you can find many instances of plane crashes or other bad things, you can find dam failures. But there's reasons, and you can also mitigate those risks through design. The quality of the rock, though, is exceptional. It's been created by glaciers, so, and it's solid rock all the way around the whole intake. So usually, failures are the result of geological weaknesses. That's why we want to move forward with this drilling. Thank you. I think I'll just sit out here and tell public comments or not.
So I know y'all were expecting me to come back up here. So with that being said, yeah, for the amount of dams that are above populated areas that haven't failed, I can give you numbers that have. The $100,000 from the city is a problem that I have as a commission member on in other areas. We've taken hard cuts in Parks and Recreation. The schools have taken hard cuts. I don't understand where $100,000 all of a sudden is magically here for a study on a project that may or may not happen, when there are other areas in the city that need money and it's not there for them. The risk, there are no risk, there are no guarantees that you can give us that we and our clients and our property are going to be safe. Commissioner Gard, or Councilmember Gard said it pretty eloquently. There is one property at risk. Our property. We have a 20-year history being economically feasible. We have year-round paid into this city and the economy of the city. We have a historic property, and we've done it without being a big corporation. We've done it as a family business, and we've done it successfully. And it's difficult for me to pay into a co-op that wants to use the money for something that's dangerous. It's difficult for me to come to the city and want to participate in the city that's willing to fund something that's dangerous. I 100% would love to see us have alternative energy, but not at risk to any single life or property. It's not worth it. It's just not worth it. And I know I'm the only one sitting in that chair right now, but I'm thinking of my family, my property, and my clients. Thank you.
Are there any other audience comments? Okay, we will move on. Are there any chairpersons or representatives of boards and commissions here?
The school board?
Good evening. Alex Russen, Superintendent. I live at 209 South Second Street here in Cordova. Just a couple of items. Graduation is happening this Saturday night at 5:30. So I hope to see all of you in attendance in the crowd cheering our graduates on. Strategic planning, we're still in the process of our strategic planning as a district. And our, sort of the next stage or phase of developing that plan includes identifying core values and some of the principles around education that we want to examine as a school district. And so, look for invites to the community here in the upcoming couple of weeks to participate in some community forums and weigh in. I know we're competing with fishing season that gets underway here soon, but, you know, look for additional opportunities as the summer and fall presents themselves. We're also in the process of budget planning. At our last May board meeting, we had a first read of our budget, and we're looking to approve that budget at the June meeting, June the 12th. And hope to see anybody there. We are looking at some drawdown on our fund balance to kind of move forward with some of our needs that have been identified over the past couple of years. We've done a fair number of needs assessments, taking a look at what the interests and needs of our students were, are, and, you know, some facility needs as well. So we're looking at drawing down that fund balance of about $450,000 for next year. And that will leave us with about a $300,000 fund balance or so for next year. And if you had any questions specific to that and wanted to visit my office at any time, you're more than welcome to drop in and ask any questions that you might have. And then the last piece, you've kind of heard this song and dance before, but I've been talking with Alan the past couple of days on some facility needs. And there's a new bubble that has appeared in the floor, high school gym floor. And so, you know, we're hosting three major events next year in addition to our usual district events, three regional events. And really want to take an opportunity to try to get that addressed. Recent conversations with the flooring company out of Wasilla, they had some opportunities to do that work this summer, the end of August, the first part of September, if we are able to kind of move quickly with the decision around addressing the floor needs. The district does have available about $135,000 towards a $250,000 floor replacement. So I'll be officially coming to you, I think, at the next council meeting, perhaps in June, to make that official request for consideration to help us fulfill, you know, the rest of the funds that we need for that project. I've got plenty of data if you're so interested to see how the community uses the facility in addition to our students and staff as well. So if anybody has an interest in taking a look at that, it's not just the school who uses the facility. We've got a great community activities and leagues and different things that use our facilities. So we're looking at that. Appreciate Alan kind of fitting me in in the past couple of days in his busy schedule to have a conversation and kind of update him on some things. With that, thank you.
Right, thank you. Questions?
Graham McGinnity says hi from Cottibear.
Okay, the student council representative. Libya?
As the school year closes, the Cordova School District would like to thank the city and community for its contributions to the lives of our students. This year, we accomplished much and have come so far as a district. We are sending off 22 seniors on Saturday at 5:30, each to go down their own path and do great things with their lives. The juniors coming up are pretty awesome, if I do say so myself. Just last night at the academic awards, we recognized individuals who always put their best foot forward in the strive to succeed, not only paying attention to the intelligence of our students, but their character as well, which is very important to CHS. CHS is proud of their students, for they have much to be proud of. As we end this school year and break off for the summer, we would like to send our deepest gratitude to the city and the people of Cordova. Our school would not be able to do what we do without you. Education is highly, is a highly important asset in every person's life, and we are so blessed to have a city council, staff, and community that sees just how necessary it is. Thank you, Cordova. We appreciate all you have done. Also, come and see the play put on by the CHS drama class tomorrow. It's called "All I Really Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten." It begins at 7:00, and admission is by donation only.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the consent calendar? We have four items on there. Is there any the council would like to reserve? Can you hear any number? Roll call vote?
I'm down there, sorry. On the consent calendar, Alina Meyer?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
James Wies?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
James Burton?
Yes.
Consent calendar.
Okay, approval of minutes of April 18th and May 2nd.
I move to approve the minutes of April 18th and the minutes of the May 2nd regular
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, are submitted. We're picking up a little bit of paper shuffling or something online if you have a chance to mute. There's no bids for tonight. Mayor's report, I don't have anything to add at this time, except a waters award.
Award play.
It's the real award.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Sam and Leif to come up here for a moment, please, representing our water team for this project. I don't think so. I think I can get close enough to the mic for those online to hear, but there are only two of these awards given to water departments in the state this year, Anchorage and Cordova. And in this EPA region, there's only 10 awarded to the Northwest states. So I think it's really a reflection, this has been a long process. It's been a 10-year project totaling about $7 million. And I think, I think this award speaks to the efforts and the professionalism of our water department, Melvin Fajardo, Joel Felix, Tom Hutchins, John Hutchins, Daniel Adahar, and Joseph Sison. And also, for a big, huge grant project like this to be successful, especially working with a federal agency, it takes a tremendous amount of administrative work to administer all those grants and to satisfy the agency's grounds, and frankly, to get your reimbursement and get the insurance for it. So Sam and Leif have really provided the continuity and a lot of the heavy lifting for this project throughout. And on behalf of the city, we just want to thank you for your work in getting this project completed. And this award is from the Environmental Protection Agency for using a loan to finance a project that's well-planned, affordable, transferable, efficient, resilient, and sustainable to the city of Cordova for LT2 compliance upgrades and for showing exceptional creativity and dedication to health and protection.
So are there any questions to me on the mayor's report? Okay, manager's report?
I'd certainly like to say thanks to, you know, Public Works and Water, particularly Sam and Leif. They've, since I've arrived, I've asked them to do a lot of things. And perhaps not in their job description, and sometimes not in their comfort zone, but they've jumped right in. And it's really been a pleasure to work with them, and they're really diligent about these grants and completing those grants. I have several things that I think are updates from previous meetings that will be informative. The comprehensive plan is out to bid, and that is due on June 14th. So we're collecting those, you know, submittals, and we will go through them to see who meets our needs. One of the things that we've talked about doing during this process that we don't know is possible, but I've had some conversations with various people is, as you know, we talked about the Build Grant, which is the old Tiger Grant. The native villages filling out one of those for the EAT Corporation to be submitted. The timeline was very short, July 19th this year. We wanted to gear up for one next year, and that would require someone who would write that grant for us. We have, we have possibilities. So we, if we can, we'd like to, we'd like to marry that with our comp plan process and see if we can get both of those done at the same time and have any economy of scale in that. So we haven't reached that conclusion yet, but we'll have that conversation with potential bidders on that project. RV Park Expansion, we found an old map from 2000 or 2001, and I was looking at it today with Susie. And so, we're going to, you know, Sam did a great analysis of the costs and the return on investment for both Five Mile, which by the way, looks like it's off the table. We had no interest in Five Mile, so we're concentrating on the ODX site. And we should have something coming back to you in that respect. The used oil building is out for a second bid, for a second proposal process, and it is due on July 12th. We did a really long proposal time on that. We pared down some of the, some of the parts of that bid, hoping to get it in a place where it might fit our money. As you know, Weston Bennett resigned, and his last day is the 25th. As you know, Weston Bennett resigned, and his last day is the 25th. And we have rewritten that job description a little bit, and that is out, out on the market right now. And it will be out in the market well until the position is filled. So, but the initial update on that is June 18th. I do, I did get back a pretty, during strategic planning, Councilman Jones talked about summer chairlift operations. And I have some information that came back from the, the association. And, you know, quite honestly, this doesn't really pencil out very well. ADA, safety, there's a variety of things that go in this. You know, personnel to run the chairlift during the summer. This, this would be relatively expensive. But what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll get this to you either in a new session or send it to you by email or, or something so that you can look at it. And then kind of a final follow-up thing is we had, as most of you saw this morning and some last night, there was a, there was a news report in KTVA out of Anchorage with Scott Mitchell at the hospital allegedly indicating that our hospital would close in June. And I'd just like to emphatically say that is not accurate. We have, with Kathy's great assistance, we have a press release that's out. We've put it on our website. We're, we're keeping up to date on it. We'll have an update tomorrow if there is one. But the hospital is not going to close. This is a, this is a federal regulatory agency funding issue. We've paid our share, we've paid our portion, and the onus is kind of on them. Murkowski's aware, Senator Murkowski's aware of it. Our other congressional delegates are aware of it. So this is moving along. We've known about this for a long time. It's been ongoing, and we've been dealing with this for a long time. It's unfortunate that it was portrayed in the media the way it was portrayed, but there's, our hospital is not going to close. So I just wanted to make that clear. And I, I've given some of you a hard copy and then sent you the press release otherwise. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council, or online?
Can I add one thing? I, you know, I've, I've really not expressed an opinion on the Crater Lake project, and I'm not going to do that. What, what I would say was, if you look at this, I think it's a, what we're trying to do in any project that we address is to do it strategically. And I think one of the issues that we've talked about over and over and over is we, we would like some growth. And so I always keep that in mind when I look at things. And while short-term costs, long-term costs, and I think what, what we've tried to portray is that in this process, there's two things that are very critical, I think, of this magnitude. One is having jumping off points. The first jumping off point was after the feasibility study. The second jumping off point is after the geotechnical study, because if we find out that there's anything wrong with the geology of the project, then you don't have to go forward. Have you spent some money, taken some risk? Yes. But you're, are you committed to the end? No. So keeping jumping off points for us. The second thing that I think I, I've talked about and portrayed is, in my still relative newness, is that I would offer that projects of this magnitude, magnitude, not just this project. If you look at the harbor, if you look at a large Northfield project, if you look at anything, these are all good candidates for, I used the term once, the hail mary funding level. But really, it, it, it's really dependent, I think, in a community this size on strong state and/or federal funding. And keep that in mind as we go forward, because, you know, certainly, if, if we had to, to go half of this alone at $10 million, that would really give you something to think about, because you, you feel it tonight. I know you feel it. You're under tremendous financial pressure. You're under tremendous financial pressure from the stuff that, that we need to do internally. Got my list today. I'm updating the list. We have tens of millions of dollars that we need to address just in our operation. Five enterprise funds, talking about numbers for water pipes, those kinds of things. So you're under tremendous financial pressure to fully fund our portion of the school funding. You're under tremendous financial pressure to make sure that the hospital keeps operating. There's a lot of financial pressure here. But with careful and strategic thought, we can make our way through all of this. Just, we just have to be, to plan ahead and be wary of all of those things. By the way, one more thing, more quick than, speaking about money. You know, one of the reasons we talk about cash flow, and this is counterintuitive to what we're asking tonight, money for the gym floor, money for a geotechnical study, money for a comp plan, counterintuitive. But the reason we keep a large amount of cash on hand, first of all, we have $1 million sitting with our investment firm, kind of as a last resort. But as of, as of the end of March, our expenditures year-to-date are $4 million of a $10 million, $400,000 budget. But our income is only $1.9 million. So we've got a $2.1 million gap in cash flow. Eventually, it catches up with itself. That's why we have a lot of cash on hand. We keep a lot of cash, we're cash level. We're tracking really well on the expenditures. Income is a little bit behind as expected in the first year. We don't get our two big sales tax. We'll get our first big sales tax until four months into the, the sixth month of the year, or second quarter. So all in all, it looks good.
Questions, council?
Yeah, I actually have one question about the recent election for Prop 1 and 2, because those were in our budget. And we've been collecting those taxes up until this point. When do those taxes go away or do? Can you figure out how much we've collected on those taxes so we know how much we're missing right now?
We started working on that this morning. I don't, I don't know what the, the answer is to what the number is. And I think it, they, they end when the election is certified, which will be?
The 24th, May 24th noon. We're having a special meeting to certify. I imagine we're allowed to call it the next day, that we would supplement to those, yeah.
So I think, you know, rough, rough estimates, 50% or less what we're looking at, probably even less than that based upon the season. So we'll have to, we'll have to get through it. I have some suggestions for you.
Any other questions, council? The clerk's report?
I was going to say, after Alan's last point about timing of the time of year and income and stuff, revenue, I'm trying to help with one of those. So we'll certify the roll tonight and then set the mill rate next time. Of course, we don't collect property tax until the last of August and the last of October. So that's a big chunk of money that comes late also. But besides working on certifying the roll, of course, we were handling an election yesterday, and the election board did a great job, as usual. Five ladies were here, and Tina and I for about 17 or 18 hours yesterday. And we got everything tallied and, you know, the counting went a little more quickly than I thought, so that was good. There are about, there could be as many as 150 ballots left to count. It depends on how the nine-question ballots come back to me from divisional elections as to whether or not those will count or how many of those will count. There's only about four more absentee by mail yet to be returned to me, but those might still make it timely. They would need to be here by Tuesday, the 22nd. And then at 9:00 AM on the 23rd, Wednesday, we'll count those last few. Well, it's more than a few. As far as how the votes went, I mean, I think Prop 2 and Prop 3, motor fuel and marijuana, are within 150. So there's a slight possibility of those being turned. But over the years, usually the absentee vote goes about the percentages of the regular vote. So I don't anticipate either of those being overturned, but I guess we won't really until after we count. I guess that's about all I have. I can answer property questions when that item comes up, if there are any. And I can answer all the questions now.
Any other questions, council? Okay, correspondence, emails from Carolyn Lynn Potter and Rob Brown. And under ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 1169. An ordinance of the City Council, the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a 10-year lease agreement with Saddle Point Machine LLC, which includes an option to purchase described as Lot 3, Block 5, Northfield Development Park. First reading.
I move to approve ordinance 1169. Do you have anything else?
Second. Have a motion and a second. This is a first reading, so it's just a voice vote. But Councilman Meyer would like to speak to your motion.
Yeah, I looked over it. It looked like the lease agreement might have been different than how we've done it in the past. And it seemed like a good, good thing for the economy and for the travel lift and for the fishing industry, so.
Councilman Leece? Sorry about that. I, further discussion, council? Do you hear any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'm going to recuse myself for this next item and just pass the gavel to Councilman Shafer. And this is actually, it's a resolution that allocates unbudgeted funds. So it's actually going to be a roll call vote, and it requires a majority of council.
Says need a motion?
Well, yeah. What Clay's been doing is reading it, so then the person making the motion doesn't have to. So if you don't mind reading it into the record, that'll work.
Okay, so before, it says Resolution 05-18-12. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing amendment of the FY18 budget and authorizing the expenditure to be used for geotechnical assessment for the Crater Lake project. Councilman?
I move that we adopt the resolution 0518-18-12 for purposes of discussion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Councilman Gard?
Do you need to select an option there?
Aye.
A funding level option?
I think there's a bunch of them.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of discussion. Because there's a lot of shuffling on the phone.
I don't know, Alan wrote this one. I don't know if.
Well, I, I, I think you could, I put options in there for you to pick. But you could pick, you could pick zero funding level to a, to 100%, of the request, which is $100,000. You can sort of name what it is that you want to do. I'm just trying to make it open so you weren't locked into any particular position. I think, you know, when we talk about the funding, the discussion that this money really could come from the, from the water fund, because it is a water project, depending upon, I'm trying to find it right now, what their, what their, what their reserve account is. But I, I did say in this resolution that it's coming from the, you know, come from the general fund, because we obviously have lots of expenses in both. So this will be transferred. Let me see if I can find it real quick here.
All right, Councilman Gard, you made the motion, so.
I've got a quick question for Clay on this. What are we talking about for total dollars for doing the geotechnical study? Now you said we had $100,000.
We're anticipating about $500,000. $500,000 to $600,000.
You guys peek into the mic, please?
He was saying they're anticipating about $500,000 to $600,000 worth of costs, total cost for the geotechnical side of the study.
So you made, Councilman Leece, you need a second. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm kind of just seconded for discussion. Now, I feel like this is something I'd really like to see happen. I don't see it happening right now. We just, we just had to reveal on, on two different tax ordinances and we're finding a request from the city. I, I feel like if we didn't do this, I might eat my words a lot, because I've got a brother that just bought a canner. Just to get, you know, and we are expanding our, our need for water in Camp Two's building. Hopefully, this is, this is happening. I, I haven't seen a lot of public opinion and support of it. And I wouldn't mind if, if water has a reserve and that's something a water department was amended to or reverting this back to staff, like Mr. Baylor recommended, and really getting, just giving us some more time. I, I don't know what, what CECE's time crunch is, but, but I, you know, I would like to go about this strategically if we can.
In the budget year two, your balances for the sewer fund and the water fund are $387,000 and $387,000 in the sewer fund and $372,000 in the water fund. I, you know, in the, in the progress through this, certainly we could figure out a cost for you, what it would take to hire that kind of expertise, that, you know, third-party come into a risk assessment for us. I, I don't know the, the engineering part of doing a risk assessment without a geotechnical study. So, you know, that'd be something that we'd have to look at the costs and get back to you on that, what that would be, if that's the direction you want to go. You know, have a third-party assessment of the feasibility of the project and those kinds of things. You know, have a third-party assessment of the feasibility of the project and those kinds of things.
And I wasn't trying to step on any toes or anything that came up in public comments, so I wanted to.
Madam Chair, this is Councilmember Allen.
Go ahead, Councilmember Allison.
Are we discussing an option? Did I miss somebody? Are we, are we talking 100,000, are we talking 25, or?
I don't think a number has been mentioned yet. So we're discussing any funding level.
Okay, I, I guess my, my comments on it, you know, maybe random here a little bit, but I don't believe that the city, as an entity, really needs this project for water. I think some of those questions were, were asked earlier. And I don't think that, I guess, having worked in the seafood industry for 30 years, there's a lot they could do to, to conserve the water. And if they were paying what it actually costs for the water, that they would try to make more efforts towards those lines. So, so I don't think from the city's perspective as an entity that we really need the water. The city as a community, however, I think this project should be beneficial as a whole, not only for water reserves, but for, on the electric side of things. I don't think we can tell without, we can tell what the risk really is without doing something along the geotechnical side. I don't, I don't necessarily think that we should be all in at $100,000, but I think that we need to show that we are at least a partner in figuring out what the safety levels are. And in fact, I would venture to propose that potentially this project could make it actually safer than it is currently. Now, that's just a, you know, well, here assumption or presumption that some scientists would get big money to, to study. But, but I do believe that without the geotechnical, you really can't, can't go any further. I think CEC is already committed to doing this project. It makes sense to save 100, $200,000 on the demo cost by having the company do it that's already here doing the same work for another entity. So, so I'm in favor of, of supporting the geotechnical and, and supporting CEC in their endeavors, not necessarily just for water. You know, I just, they did it and billed us for any water over 1.5 million that we took. But that's a whole nother negotiation. But I'm more thinking that 25 or 50,000 dollar level. But since we don't have a number out there, I won't suggest an amendment at this time. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
I have the similar opinion as Councilman Allison, and that I think it would be good to have more of the information that would come from the geotechnical assessment. Like that'd be valuable information. And whatever the results that come from that, you know, then from that point, we can decide whether to go ahead or whether to step back. But given the current budget state for the city, and like the, you know, taxes are just revealed and funding requests from the school might be coming. And I think $100,000 is a big ask. I, I mean, I wouldn't be comfortable supporting that amount either. But I do, I think the information that would come from this would be valuable. And from there, we can reassess moving forward. But yeah, just with how our budget is right now, I think that is, that's, it's too much.
I'll go next.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so first and foremost, the biggest stumbling block that I see here is the fact that we don't have the downstream property owners on board with this. The rain, we've spoke several times about this in one way, shape, or form. And until there's some collaboration there, where either those fears are set aside or concerns are addressed, I don't support using any city money to move forward on this project. That being said, I also did a little small poll. And the response was overwhelmingly negative. And this does not lack, or this does not have the support of our public to move forward on, especially, you know, considering we're stewards of the city's money. And we don't want to govern by referendum, as we've been exposed to several times now. So without more public support, I can't support using city funding for this at this point in time.
Yeah, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yep, who's that? Go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
Who is this?
I have the same mind as.
Oh.
And, you know, I just, I'm opposed to this project, spending any money on this project at this time. We have a harbor that's falling apart, roads that can't take, schools that need work. We have five buildings on Main Street that we can't fill with businesses, and a hospital that needs a million dollars per year, plus another million dollar bill for communications. I don't believe we need this project. I believe it has the potential to raise our water rates. And I don't really see any potential for it lowering our electricity rates. We've already had two hydro projects, and electricity's more expensive now than it was 30 years ago. I don't want to see us spending $100,000 that we don't have on something we don't need. And I also agree that there is a potential for loss of life, and that is a fatal flaw of this project. Thank you.
Guess I'm the last one, so I'll go. I definitely can't support $100,000 from the city going in there. If I were to vote on it, I'd be probably on the lower end, just kind of on the same side that a lot of you guys were saying. It'd be nice to have the, have this information so we can see what the rock is and. But I do really see the concerns of Orca Lodge. I mean, if I had a dam built above my house and had a lot of people in and out of there, I'd be very concerned too. But we need power, we need some green energy, and hydro seems like a good idea. And it's nice, fresh water. I just don't know if we need the water at this time, and in the future, we could. I don't know, I have a hard time really picking a side on what way to go and. I don't know, given it a lot of thought. I think a lot of you guys have given it a lot of thought too, but yeah, I don't really know where I'm at.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment.
Go ahead.
This is Councilmember Allison. I'd like to plug in a $25,000 and change the whereas to say that the funding comes from the water fund, general reserve, whatever that water reserve fund is that we put their depreciation account in.
There's an amendment. Is there a second? We need to second? Is there a second to support that amendment?
I'll second it.
Councilman Allison, would you like to talk about the amendment?
Yeah, I was just thinking, until we do something on the table, which really the motion, what didn't have the details on the table, so that we can either vote it up or down. I, again, I'll support the $25,000 coming from the water, water reserve fund. I don't think I would go much more than that. But I think it's important to get the geotechnical done, and then we can go from there with the, we, we can't really know the risk until we, we see that information. So I think it's worth $25,000 to get that, and I'll support it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gar?
I know this is an emotional, fearful thing for those that live downstream from it. And I don't think we can make a good, well-informed decision as a community without having more information than we have right now. I don't think any of us want to do anything that's gonna put anybody at risk downstream from it. It's not committing us, building anything. It's just giving us some more information. This grant money that we're talking about for the geotechnical study, this isn't like highway money or something where if we don't build the highway, we have to pay it back, because there is four of them. Okay, that's my two cents.
Are there any other council comments?
I guess I have one comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Councilmember Jones. I, uh, so after listening to a couple other councilmembers' comments, sounds like people are leaning towards wanting more information regarding, you know, the, the risk. And we won't know the risk until we have more information. Well, I just want to, you know, I guess, point out to people that that area is prone to landslide. That area was mid and high to landslide. If you drive out Orca Lodge, or Orca Canary Road, there's multiple different five tents, and it used for, had to clear rocks off in the past. And just doing this geotechnical work with having a kid steer going up on that hillside should have the potential of destabilizing the region and destabilizing our water source. And that's just not a risk that I am willing to take.
Is that a risk? Can I ask a question? Is that a risk, like the, the land stability and whatnot? Is that, I don't know. Cause we can say that's a thing, but is it actually? I don't know, I just. Is the, is that a legitimate risk where having equipment and stuff going up and down that mountainside? Will it destabilize? I don't know.
I think I need to go to something.
I mean, we can, listen to risks, where you have, there's a risk of polluting a water source and how they needed assurances before they were willing to permit the activity. That was like an hour ago.
Can I ask?
Councilman Gar?
One more question for Clay. What?
Can you use your microphone, please?
What kind of discussions the CEC had with the Orca Lodge owners, the rains, on how to do this without drastically impacting their business season this year?
Would you like to come up and use the microphone, Clay?
I just want to say, I think as much as I'd like to, I think I'd rather just not participate. I mean, there's, you know, I think it's better if I just stay out of the discussion, honestly. I tried to give what comments I could, you know, beforehand.
No, I am, I'm not trying to be confrontational, because I'm just trying to figure out, because they, those were some of the, some of the fears that were stated from the property owner stuff. And I just don't know what all's gone on. That's all I was asking for, is a little bit of background.
I, I think like with any project, there's gonna be a lot of ongoing discussions at every step of the process, and I think I'm comfortable saying that.
Okay.
At their city manager, Lanning, do you have a comment?
Well, I've been involved in about 30-plus public projects of various sizes. I've never had one that ever satisfied anyone. But I've always taken the same tact. And that is to, beyond the safety risk factor that at some point in the project would be determined for you with certainty, we're trying to keep our risk at the lowest possible level as an entity and a community. And I think that's just, you, you're taking little steps at a time to get yourself to a place of assurance that you can go forward or stop. Again, we're trying to give you jumping off points. This is a jumping off point. Do the geotech comes back that it's, there are uncertainties, you can jump off. The other portion is mitigating risk in the process of doing the geotechnical study. Can anybody say with 100% certainty that there's nothing bad is gonna happen? Nope. You know, so this is a calculated thing that has been done literally thousands and thousands of times across the country. There are people that are skilled at doing it. And it's our job as a community that if you approve it, that we make certain that the person doing it keeps our risk as low as possible. I think if you were gonna take a step for 50,000 to assure yourselves of where you want to go, you have to ask yourself, is, is spending a certain amount of money, whether it's 25 or 50, whatever it is, worth the assurance of knowing that you're taking the next step in knowledge? And that's what you have to ask yourself. Is there anybody that could offer you right now that this absolutely will work? Or it absolutely won't work? I don't think there's anybody in this room that knows that answer right now. I know there are people that are passionate about it and say that there are these risks involved for us. And that's true. But for moving forward with any project, you have to determine your level of risk. Could we bring in an outside expert? We, we might spend $25,000 and they would say, what I need to make this assessment for you is I need a geotechnical study. I don't even know the answer to that at this point. So just my two cents.
Are there any other comments from counsel? Councilman Gar?
I'd like to make a further motion. I'd like to move that we table this until the next meeting to give everybody some time to take a breath and figure out what's going on.
I'll second that motion. Councilman Gar?
I think I said it all in the motion.
Does anyone else have any comment about the motion? Councilman Meyer?
I think just some extra time to think about it and where we are financially, whether we want to spend the money or not, just like a few more weeks to think about it. I don't want to just keep pushing it off, but so I can make a decision that I feel good about.
Any other comments on the motion? Okay.
I'd rather it be refer to staff. Can we call it refer to staff?
I have no problem with that.
Just because I don't know all the rules on table, and I'm afraid I'll get it wrong, and then we'll have screwed that all up. But if you refer to staff, and something crazy happens and it doesn't make it to the next meeting, it's okay, it can come at the next one. This way, if it's referred to staff, it can just come back. And then it also kills the rest of those motions too.
Okay.
Do you want me to roll on refer, or do you want to just take the vote? And, or you can still have a discussion if you want.
Does anyone else want to discuss this motion? Anyone on the phone?
Yeah, I hear that one comment, you know, that's brought up both sides over the last couple of years. I know that it's late at this time, but the essence with this summer's building season on this, we have all seven councilmembers present. It might not be the case in future meetings. I would prefer it to be this decision be made tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then, oh, sorry.
I, I, actually, I would second that. Maximum 25,000.
Maximum 25,000 dollars or not, the way I see it, um, I, I think that's fine as well.
Okay. So, we're gonna vote on whether or not to refer it to staff?
And I'm gonna take a roll, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so on refer to staff. Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
No.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yeah.
James Wies?
No.
James Burton?
Yeah.
Motion carries 5-2.
Hey, uh, thank you, Councilman Schaefer. Um, we don't have unfinished business on the agenda under new and miscellaneous business. Uh, we have the certification of the 2017 property assessment rule.
I'm going to certify the 2018 property assessment rule as presented by Tiddy Burttoff.
A second.
Have a motion, a second. Did you want to speak to the motion, Councilman Allison?
Uh, no, it's a pretty straightforward motion. You know, this, uh, it's all been calculated, and it is what it is, so certify it.
Any additional, um, discussion? Any discussion, council? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the 2017 property rule is certified. Pending agenda calendar and elected and appointed officials list. Councilman Garden?
I'd like to put, uh, on the next agenda, discussion about, uh, raising the sales tax a half a percent in town to cover missing revenues after yesterday's vote. We've been talking tonight about excess dollars going out for school gym floors and other projects, and we're talking about money for geotechnical studies, money for, um, comprehensive plan, and we just blew a $340,000 hole in our early minimal budget as it was.
Maybe, um, I just have a suggestion, maybe, uh, just a discussion of revenues in general, because I, I think I heard Councilman, or Manager Lanning, say that he was, staff was kind of working on a response to not having those tax revenues, so would that be all right? Uh, could certainly be one of the options to just, it might come up in the discussion.
They wrote, but, you know, if we, we're talking, you know, close to a half a million dollars in unbudgeted funds we're talking about, we've talked about here just tonight, plus the $340,000 going the other direction. So, that's another 300, you know, three quarters to a miller better that we're looking at the permanent fund for, basically.
We can put it on the agenda that way, I guess, and it could always expand into other revenue options. So, were you thinking the next regular meeting, or is it June, Susan, that we generally go to?
June 6th. What's the question?
And then, we generally, council kind of decides on a month-by-month basis whether we have one meeting a month?
Yes, but I think we have something planned for the 2nd of June.
2nd of June, you have the Homeland Security people coming on the 20th.
Not this, is it the 20, 20?
When do we set the property tax mill rate?
On the 6th.
Okay, yeah, so that would be the time for that discussion. And, um, okay.
Yeah, but sales tax increase is going to be in ordinance, right?
Yeah, it would be. On, on June 20th, you can, you, you can have a session afterwards or not. We just have the Homeland Security folks scheduled from 5 to 7.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so wait, I need more clear. Are we putting an ordinance on for the next meeting to increase sales tax by a half a percent?
Is that your request?
That was my request.
Okay, actually drafting ordinance for a half a percent sales tax increase. I guess I'd like to hear at least one other councilman that wants to do it.
Because let's, let's try and follow our pending agenda thing, so that if a councilmember makes a suggestion, I know it's tough for you, too, because it puts you on the spot, but Alan can say yes, or you can say yes. Or, if not, I would agree that possibly a second councilmember's support would be required to put it on as an action item.
I, I, I'm not going to put it on myself unless, I mean, there's seven councilmen here, I'll support it. I want to hear at least two councilmen saying, you want to see that ordinance in front of you, and then it's a pretty good idea that council will consider it.
I, I mean, I would prefer to have, have a concussion before we reactionary, put another, another tax onto the agenda for an action item. I mean, we have, uh, first, you can come back, except for this tax from last year.
Okay, well, we've got two councilmen requesting it.
Yeah, and we have the two.
It's on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think it would hurt to have that discussion. No, the, yeah, we can always vote one way or the other, but the discussion, too, of like, how you said you're working on the numbers and the analysis, so nice to see what you've been working on as well.
Because just structurally, as Susan said, a sales tax change is an ordinance, so that goes through the readings, it has exposure to referendum. What's happened in the past is, um, you know, the setting of the property tax rule becomes the de facto thing, because that's something council does by action, and that's where the revenue shortfalls tend to land. So, this whole strategic planning process over the last year and a half, identifying where to spread those, raise those revenues, part of the strategy has been to not put it on the property tax, but that's what generally has happened, so. Uh, other pending agenda items?
Also, June 6th, there will be a public hearing. I should have not put maybe, because a rate-setting resolution such as the mill rate requires a public hearing. So, there will be a public hearing. Do we have a plan for a work session before that? Because, you know, that would be the, a good spot for a revenue discussion at the work session previous, on the 6th.
You mean the rate setting for property tax?
No, the, maybe just revenues in general, before we get to the ordinance that's going to be on the regular meeting. I don't know.
I, I think we can use the work session on the, you know, the next meeting, on the 6th, to speak to, you know, to the sales tax in particular, the merits and and, uh, drawbacks from that, as well as the other revenue sources. You know, we have, if, if you look back, we have that, um, that examination of exemptions and exceptions. We, I think in one of those documents, we characterized where the real bang for the buck was in terms of raising revenue. There have been other suggestions in the community that there was a revenue committee, you know, back in, was it 13, 14? That ended up not making a recommendation to you. And again, I think, I think going forward in terms of revenue, the discussion is wide open. What I tried to warn against in our initial discussions was the additional revenue part of it, sort of viewing the, the one-year and the individual impact of that upon our budget. And I, I just hope we can, we can sort of diffuse that and really stay with our designated consistent revenue as part of the discussion. So, uh, we, we can, we can talk about it all. I'll be, we'll be prepared to speak to anything.
Mayor Copeland, I meant to get with you before this meeting about pending agenda. We've been doing too much discussing a pending agenda, and I just fear the public is going to come to me sometime and say, you guys were talking about revenue, and it wasn't anywhere on the agenda.
We can form this on the agenda later, but let's just plan on having a public hearing. Alan and I can get together, and, uh, then we'll have an agenda item for, uh,
A 45-minute work session pre-posed to the,
And then we'll have a, um, ordinance to consider a half percent sales tax increase. Hey, um,
Sorry, I don't mean to stifle pending agenda, but I fear the consequences.
Yeah, no, we do tend to get hung up there, so. Okay.
Mayor Copeland?
Yes, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, I just want, I'm sure Alan's probably already got a plan, but I just want to be sure, because time is of the essence, that we get something on the agenda for the, uh, school gym, because that, that is pretty time-sensitive. They, they're going to get it done this summer.
Yeah, that, that'll be on the next agenda for sure. Okay. All right, uh, audience, I'm sorry, you know, we've got the pending agenda and elected and appointed officials. Uh, audience participation?
You know what, real quick, sorry. Just that, um, I think I, I should have mentioned this in my report, but that we have a few vacancies.
I was just going to mention that, so have we had, well, actually, I was going to ask if any had come in. Any others of interest? Okay.
No.
Um, and I, I guess I'll just mention that I'm going to have the, um, meeting with, uh, boards and commissions tomorrow at noon.
No, next.
Uh, next Thursday.
Yeah.
That's right, 24th.
Oh, shoot. We have a special meeting next Thursday.
Well, so, spread the word, we have some vacancies.
Maybe we'll have a special meeting next Thursday at noon. Well, we, I know we will, because we have to certify.
To certify the election.
Yeah. I'm sure your meeting, your lunch could start just after that. There's not much to certifying the election that,
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I just need four of you present by phone or however.
Okay.
Okay. It's required that I do it within nine days of the election, so I don't really know what would happen if I didn't get four, but I will scrounge you guys up by phone or however. Okay.
Okay. Audience participation?
Tom, you have three or four of your animals, right? Thanks for your discussion. I guess I need to clarify myself a little bit on what I was thinking about getting some more information, and basically, that's on the feasibility study that's already been done. I've read it a couple of times, I've listened to Clay's talks, I've talked to former board members, and I'm still confused about viability of this project. And one day, I'm thinking, this is going to be great, and I don't know how much power is it going to generate? Are we going to get six months, eight months, two months? And that's where I thought about getting somebody, there's a lot of people, and Clay gave you some names that have been power generation, maybe have retired, could read that feasibility study and sit down with you and go, you know, this is, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, or maybe there's some issues, or, you know, just get some input. And maybe you, maybe you totally understand it, but I, I don't. I've read it, and I'm not taking anything away from Clay, but he's, this is his project, and he's, he's an honorable man and everything, but I just got questions, and I'd like to hear it from a third party, somebody that's not a stakeholder. And, and also, the community needs to hear that. I mean, my goodness, we couldn't pass a four cents a gallon tax. And the council is even split on it. So, if, if we go down, if we, if we continue on this, the geological study, if we go with that, if it turns good, if we can safely satisfy some other people's needs, you're still going to have to bond us with the people, and you're going to have to sell that. You know, and that's still going to be a big hurdle. Raise property taxes and other things. And it might be a great project, but you're going to have to go, convey that to people, that this is a great project. So, that's kind of where I was at. It's, uh, I think it's going to be a good project if it was built safely and with other issues, but just not sure. I'm not that much, I'm not an electrician, I don't do power generation, so some of that's a little bit hard. I hope you guys can all understand it. So, that was my concerns, and it was really helpful to hear your questions and answers on the water part of it. That's helpful. There may be some more questions there, but that whole cost benefit, you know, I think you're doing the right thing. I really get nervous, too, is when we have to approve this tonight, you know? I mean, this building got built, but if you remember, we had to start it before the plans were even done, you know? We don't want to go down that road again with projects, so thank you very much for your time and effort. And, uh, as manager of CEC, I hope you have the best of luck. Thank you.
Wendy Rainey, 2500 Orca Road, uh, The Fatal Flaw. Um, I'd just like to thank you guys for seriously, um, looking at all the angles. Um, we appreciate that. To answer your question, um, our season started May 1st, and we have had no discussion regarding an impact that a geotech survey would have for us this summer. I can't change the reservations that are here. We're full on, we're in our season. I don't have time to step aside and rework anything for this summer, so we are headed forward. I appreciate, um, Councilmember Burton stating that, um, you know, city money shouldn't be used until everybody's on board. I kind of feel that way, too, but, uh, like I said before, we do want to see, uh, alternative energy, energy use, but until, um, our concerns are satisfied, uh, and our safety is taken into account, we can't be on board with this project. And I appreciate the level of, uh, of thought you've put into it. Um, it's extremely emotional, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. There are audience comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, council comments, uh, Councilman Schaefer?
Oh, congratulations to the water, for the Water Department Award. Very well done. Also, congratulations to all the graduating seniors. That's exciting. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Wies?
Just best of luck for our fishing fleet tomorrow, and Lathan Sam, congratulations on your award, and it sounds like that's not the only thing you're being tasked with and going above and beyond with. Anytime I come in, you properly and professionally, uh, something will be in my place. So, that's great. You guys are great. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman, I'll go online. Uh, Councilman Allison?
Yeah, uh, congratulations to everybody there, and, uh, thanks for everybody for putting in the time. They're my cool counselors, and, uh, thanks to the Raineys there for, for staying involved and in the whole project, and hopefully we can make things work for everybody, or if not, we can, um, stop the budget. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Burton?
Uh, no comment, just thanks to everybody that showed up.
Councilman, thank you. Uh, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, well, thank everybody for, for showing up, participating. And, uh, yeah.
Hey, uh, Councilman Garden?
I echo all the comments before me and have no other comment. Thank you.
Councilman Meyer?
Uh, same thing. Echo everyone's comment, and I'm new to council, so I know this prayerly project has kind of been on the radar, and there's been a lot of presentations, so I'm trying to catch up on that and try to make a decision that I feel comfortable with, so.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you, council, and especially ones that'll be sitting over net tomorrow. Make sure you catch lots, and make sure it crosses a Cordova dock. It generates lots of raw fish tax revenue. As, uh, Clerk, um, Bujua mentioned, we don't have the, uh, executive session, we don't have a legal update for tonight. So, there's only one item left on the agenda. Um, motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Not that it matters.